It's a little after 12:30 and we will call the meeting to order. This is the community service meeting. And if we can go over, everybody, I'll give them a few minutes to read these applications. There's four applications for a visitor's promotion council. And there's four applications for the zoning board of adjustments. And the zoning board, actually, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
We all have a get. So if we could go around the room and we'll start with Joe and give our names.
Joe Lorenz, county finance. PJ Morgan, county commissioner.
Mark Kraft, county commissioner.
Claude Duda, county board.
Kent Holm, Douglas County Environmental Services Director.
Catherine Hall, county administration.
Diane Carlson, county administration.
Kim Bolo, county clerk.
You want to announce yourself or not? Okay. I'm going to give everybody, we're going to start with the zoning board of adjustments. And I have four very highly qualified applicants. All of them willing to serve. And I think this might be the first time we've ever had four applications.
I don't remember having this many people. I just said it was something.
How many openings are there?
Two.
Two.
Oh, okay.
So I have to tell you, I was impressed with everyone. They all say that they want to be on their not to have it on their resume. They want to actively participate in the community. They gave me examples of their participation. I have my favorites, but that's not necessarily your favorites. And so let me know when you're done reading. Jerry Knopman is one of my growing ideas. He's retired and he seems to be wanting to pay back his community. Tracy Hightower was very enthusiastic, was very good. Eric Vanna was very good.
Tracy Hightower.
And Ryan.
Cool.
Seems very nice.
Is that Tracy Hightower? Is that, is Tracy Hightower abbreviated or is it just Hightower?
Hightower Henny.
Yeah, she was in my law school class at great, she's pretty good.
She was the Nebraska innocence project.
Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation? I recommend Tracy Hightower and Gary Knopman. I've been lobbied hard by Eric Vanna. He's very good, very qualified. But these other two just impressed me a little bit more.
I'm good with that.
I am.
Okay, so those will be the two, Gary Knopman and Tracy Hightower. Now we'll go to the visitor's motion council, yes.
I forgot that Tim Clark was in here. He's a friend of mine.
I've known Tim for over 30 years.
Ah, Tim Clark?
Yeah.
He worked in the mayor's office with me at the time I was there. Good guy.
He's a great guy and very formidable.
Jay Lund had applied previously for the hotel position, but talking to staff, he's an investor, not a hotel owner. So he didn't get that, so I had his name put in there automatically.
Yeah, he's developing the black stone he's might steps on. And he's one of the main developers of it.
I have trace.
Todd Simon I worked with because when Omaha Steaks was in the building I was in on 84th and Dodge, Todd Simon office there, Brad at all the Simons. And Tim, as I said, worked for me the entire time I was mayor. So I kind of feel like I have a conflict, so I'll let you, you know.
I get it.
I've talked about three of them briefly. And Haley Armstrong serves in a similar position for UNMC in promoting their community service things, bringing people in, et cetera. She and Todd Simon were extremely enthusiastic. Jay Lund was a little more like me, never getting enthusiastic there. He didn't, but he knows what it is. He was well prepared for the interview. Tim Clark came in and I really liked him, but he wasn't prepared for the interview.
More like me.
Exactly. Not prepared, yeah. So my preference, well, you've mentioned a preference earlier. And so did.
Mary Ann.
Mary. What was hers?
Todd Simon.
And what is yours?
Probably Todd Simon. I mean, I've been part of it. Well, I'd be happy.
My call for, I mean, this is a high-quality candidate.
Yeah, those.
It's rare we have candidates like this. But yeah, I'd vote for Todd Simon too. Todd Simon it is?
Yeah, as I said, I feel like confident because I know Jay and Todd both have tremendous passion about wanting to do it and all that. And has done a lot of, you know, the black stone district and all that stuff. So, you know, there may come a time later with some individual, but that's for you two to decide.
So Todd Simon.
Okay.
Now we'll get to the meat of the meeting. Number three on the, oh, I forgot to announce a copy of the open meeting on the wall.
I'll get this back to you if you want.
No, I'm just going to. And item three is environmental services, so Ken?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I was with you today about several different items to update you and also to just kind of give a precursor to some things that will be coming in front of you later on. A little initial information about the flooding impact, some of the response that we have with our department and some of the things that we've done. Commissioner, due to particular Commissioner Borison and questions, because this is mainly her district that was impacted, but I'll go over a couple of things that we did there so you're familiar with what our response has been and is going forward. A little bit about landscaping type things, just a real short item about land use regulations, where we are in the update pending, or as a result of the update of the conference of plan. And then some things related to solid waste. So first about the flooding situation. One of the things that we did initially was to go out and make an initial assessment right after the flood, and this was just a few days after. Basically, the first day that we could get access on some of the roads that had been impassable. So we're taking an outside visual assessment and then we're putting up some placards that talk about what residents should be doing. And that placard, essentially this verbiage talking about, you know, your building's in the flood plain and before you do anything, FEMA is going to require us to go in and do this inspection and do it a damage assessment. And so that's really what we are in the process of doing, completing these damage assessments. And then we will do a, after the landowner requests an inspection, we'll do an analysis that's based on a FEMA template and provide them with a damage assessment. Really, the critical piece here is that if they are in the floodway, which is the area adjacent to the rivers, if a structure is more than 50% of its valuation, more than 50% damaged, that structure really cannot be replaced at all. Can't be repaired, can't be replaced, can't build on that footprint again. So there are some folks that are going to, that are in that particular category. And so those are going to be the people who, you know, what do they do? And those are some real hard questions that come out of this. If there are folks that have buildings in the flood plain that's outside of the floodway, it's in flood, what we call the flood fringe, it's basically still flood plain, but it's outside of that floodway area. As long as those folks meet some elevation requirements, they generally can rebuild regardless of the percent of damage to the building. So in summary, that's what we're doing right now. We're still in kind of this analysis response and providing people options to vote. And that will go on for a while, I believe, yeah.
Ken?
Yep.
That building, for example, that's greater than 50% damage.
Correct.
Okay. Now, is this picture from the inside of that same building?
No, I don't believe it is.
If a building is damaged and you're in the area because the road is open and it's accessible inside, but the owner isn't there, can you go inside?
We can if there is a, if there is a valid reason for us to do so. And there's no one around, there's kind of an implied consent that we can go in and look at that. But generally, we're not going to go inside unless the owner is there. And that's why the, as part of the placarding of the building, we requested the landowner to request an inspection. We set it up that they're convenient to go out and then generally we would go inside at that point.
Claude, do you have any questions? PJ? No. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on, the little bit about the county's conference of plan, I want to do this first before we get into the landscape piece. The board adopted the updated conference of plan last September. And as part of that, we are looking at updating the relevant regulations with zoning subdivision and so on to fit with the New Orleans Conference of Plans. The flooding issue that I just talked about has really set this project back by at least three or four months. So what we had hoped to get in place and have in front of the county board later this year is probably going to be next spring before we finish up this whole process. But that will be coming to the board at some point. We'll put that in front of the plan and commission the recommended updates to the land use regulations first. And they'll have a regulation, have a recommendation for the county board. So moving on to some landscape items, I want to show you a couple of pictures just because most of the time you don't get to see these vantage points. This is the compartmentalized green roof at the county health center. And this is, picture on the right was just taken yesterday. That's from our camera that's up on the roof. So doing really well and really pleased with how that roof's responding, helping to protect that and provide some HVAC values there, too. Out in front of the health center, we made a number of different improvements, adding the block to kind of connect the lower and the upper areas. We also, and then show this, where the areas, we've added a semi-alimentic irrigation system here, bringing some water from the building out to here so that we can now access with a hose these planting areas around here instead of having to do this by a water cart and dragging hoses across the driveway. So it's much, facilitates some of the landscape maintenance there, too. And also the entrance sign that's out here, we've done some additional landscaping out there and we'll continue to enhance this area right here. Over in this particular area, which is to the west of the main entrance, there are some areas here that have been under renovation. We've kind of left those bare while this new parking lot stuff was going in. And we'll be developing those in a similar fashion to what has been done in the front of the building. So obviously, you're aware of the new parking lots have gone in. Again, this is kind of the landscape view as it looks right now. These are our security camera views that are from just the last couple of days. So you can kind of see what's going on with some of that. Some bio retention stormwater feature right here that the contractor still has to kind of button up and deal with. So that is about the only other issue there. So to move out to the west campus, one of the things that was installed there, a couple of bio retention gardens. And this spring, thanks to some good timely rains, we've started to get some pretty good establishment of some of the wildflowers that were planted there, that were seeded there. So this is a work in progress. This is probably three, maybe four years to get it fully established. But we'll continue to work with this and to kind of proliferate this, these wildflower plantings within that bio retention area. And there's actually two of them out there. That one you were just looking at is right here. And then the other one is over to the kind of the northwest of the building. So one of the other things that we're starting to work on here is more of a conceptual plan for the entire campus to help to renovate some of the landscape where a lot of trees were removed. And then also to provide some additional shade and stormwater benefits. One of the overriding concepts is to really come in and try to do some plantings, some mature tree plantings that kind of go along driveways and parking lots and provides shading to the pavement, helps to reduce paving temperatures, just creates a lot better ambiance and aesthetics of the campus as well. The other aspect is we're trying to establish a walking path that we go around portions of the campus itself. That'll tie in with some of the health and fitness initiatives that the county has been trying to push. We'll also tie that in around here to the sheriff's facility as well because they've indicated an interest in that. So those are just some of the things that are going on there. We are looking to kind of convert some of just the mowed areas to more of a natural lower basins landscape that will fit in well with the bio retention areas. These are well away from the building, but will result in less mowing and some more visual interest with wildflowers and other plant materials. So the walking paths eventually hopefully will look something like this. They may not be completely hard surface, but they will look to be some hydrant paths with some good tree cover so that they have some good shade so they're not just out there in the middle of the sun. Any questions on the landscape piece of it?
Nope. Okay, I do.
Okay.
It looks like you're going to be planting a lot of mature trees. Do you know how many you're planning to plant?
No, this time, this is just a concept.
Well, I know it is. But I was just trying, and are we eligible for grants for the tree planting?
Yep.
And the landscaping retention costs?
Yeah, for the tree planting, yes. I can take advantage of some of those programs that are through the Nebraska statewide arboretum, the Nebraska Forest Service especially. We can get grant monies there and match some of those. Even the RRD has some grant programs that we can match to some extent.
Good. Okay. Any other questions?
So shifting gears a little bit to solid waste and trash and all those other fun things. Wanted just to back up a little bit, provide a little bit of context to this discussion. Most of the solid waste management Nebraska is driven by the Nebraska Integrated Solid Waste Management Act that was put in place in the early 1990s. And part of that, it required municipalities and regions to come up with a integrated solid waste management plan. And so that was originally done through MAPPA and a lot of community effort in 1994. And that was adopted by all of the, essentially all of the MAPPA partners, I believe. So fast forward a number of years and that plan that was originally intended to be about a 20-year plan, we get into 2010 and Sarpy County, Douglas County, City of Omaha and MAPPA combined forces to update that plan. And that was adopted by all the members in roughly early 2012. So that's what we're going on right now. One of the things that that plan called for was a task force per se to help with implementation of the planned elements. Well, along about the same time comes Hartman 2050 effort and their natural resources committee and a subgroup of that, which is the solid waste working group. I currently chair that group. What we've tried to do then is really just to combine these two efforts because there's lots of kind of overlapping strategies and goals. And so those two groups are essentially meaning as one. We just met this past Wednesday out of our new offices and I wanted to kind of go over a couple of things that will be being discussed there. One of the things that is kind of foremost in this whole thing is the fact that you have a lot of companies and a lot of municipalities and a lot of regions around the country that are now trying to go waste minimization, don't create as much waste in the first place, try to do different things with yard waste to not always just collect it, generate and collect it and throw it in the landfill or whatever. But you can also do more active composting and so on. Obviously, the city is kind of struggling and challenged with that right now with their new collection contract. We can visit about that a little bit if you have some specific questions. But there are some interesting dynamics to all this. They are looking to, for example, move from a bin to a cart system. These carts cost money. They'll get those in place. But then the whole system with the automated trucks and so on is just a leap forward for the city of Omaha from kind of the old system of having a person on the back of the garbage truck that's dumping garbage cans in to more of an automated model where you have virtually the operator in the truck can do everything just sitting in the truck. So there's a cost that comes with all of that and the city's obviously wrestling with some of that right now.
Is there a little bit of a problem sometimes? I know they use that in Maricopa County, Arizona, but you have trees. When you're driving through certain neighborhoods, you go through the 58th and Briggs or some of those neighborhoods or by Memorial Park, some of those areas, you really have a problem with the trees on the curb and trying to bring it up over the truck is what I've heard and seen.
There are some places in the city, especially when you get large trucks and you get alley pickups, for example, where trash collected in alleys and sometimes you have to make accommodations. And the city has recognized all of those. And there are kind of exceptions and alternatives that the contractor has to take into account.
Yeah.
Because that kind of a system doesn't work every place.
I mean, in Omaha, we've got a lot of trees between the sidewalk and the curb.
Sure.
And a lot of old neighborhoods over by Washington School and places like that.
Correct.
So that's how Aves does it though right now. Aves pickup, they do it like that and they have one-driver trucks. Yeah, that's what they do.
Some of them do. Aves folks that go through our neighborhood are still doing it the old-fashioned way.
Because in our neighborhood, they do it that way with the one-driver truck.
Well, you're obviously a better neighbor than I am.
Not really. He's not a champion. It was a bitter deal.
It was, it was until Joe. Okay, all right. So why is some of this important? Well, as we get into an economy that is looking, has more companies that don't want to throw things away, the county is, does rely on landfill revenue from the tip fees that we get there. And we certainly view that as an offset to property taxes. So one of the things that we are looking at, you know, from a regional standpoint is the concept of circular economy where you have materials that you can take out of the wave stream and use them for economic activity. For example, looking at, let's say some different kinds of plastics. And right now, this past six months, there was a survey by the Association of Plastic Recyclers on Nebraska, plastics manufacturers, looking and asking them, you know, how much recycled content do you use in your process? And there appears to be at least a decent opportunity for folks to look at increasing the amount of recycled material. And what that does then is create, helps to create a demand. If you've been following any of the kind of the recycling news over the past couple of years, when China made the decision not to accept a lot of recycled materials from the United States and other countries, that really kind of was a slap in the face and say, hey, you know, we need to do a better job with all of our recycling processes and clean up, basically clean up our act because a lot of the stuff that was being shipped out was really contaminated. Part of that's an education piece, but part of it is also on the part of the folks who sort and separate recyclables, having better equipment, having better technology to be able to do that. And gradually, you kind of get to that. But the point about the circular economy is really, if we're not going to throw stuff in the landfill, we need to be able to create and generate local markets that produce more economic activity, add to the tax base and offset that loss of landfill revenues. So that's more of the push right there. And I believe you'll see in the coming years, more of that kind of push. One of the other big issues that's at the forefront right now is really about solid waste reporting. In the state of Nebraska, we really don't have a mechanism other than voluntary reporting to know what's out there. And one of the things that actually, well, you were just getting up here, at noon, there was a webinar that I was listening to on what's called a municipal measurement program looking to standardize things across the country to provide a tool for measuring solid waste, including your performance, being able to use that to then enhance your, the local programs that you have, benchmarking across, against your peers. And then it's also a centralized data resource where we can see what's going on with it. And why is that important? We need to be able to identify how much of a given material is available. So if we're going to encourage Joe Entrepreneur that has a process to process plastics, and Joe needs 10,000 tons of this every year, if we don't know how much we have, how can Joe even make a business decision about that? So part of it is simply having the data that allows folks to say, oh, I could take that percentage of that waste stream and I could do something with it. So it helps them from a business standpoint, deal with, deal with the, with that part of the waste issue. That, better data, better reporting, also is one of the recommendations that came out of the LB 1101 study in 2016. Currently, the Department of Environmental Quality really isn't doing anything with that, and so that's been a push that I've asked them, you know, look, you've got a recommendation here, and I think combined with this municipal measurements program, which is a, essentially a free service for municipalities, that we can get some good data there, and that would fit right in with some of the things that they say they need and which they do need. Shift a little bit here now to the discussion about legislative bill 580. That was something that I asked the board to support, was introduced. Basically, the premise of 580 was to increase the $1.25 per ton tippity at the landfill to $2, and then use that 75 cents differential to fund household hazardous waste programs. Number of opponents across the state to that for varying reasons. So one of the things that we want to do as the Hartland 2050 solid waste working group is to identify some different research topics related to household hazardous waste that will help kind of frame that bill if it comes in that form or not, but to frame how we go forward with household hazardous waste as it's collected in the state, to do it a little more comprehensively and to do it in a way that's a little more sustainable from a funding standpoint. And that potentially does impact Douglas County. Hopefully, we can get to a more sustainable funding model that doesn't involve just applying for grants to DEQ, because those grants seem to be in jeopardy the more we go on. And potentially then using some of the existing grant money to improve recycling and some other solid waste infrastructure rather than using it to, using it for operations like it is now.
Excuse me. I'm going to leave, but I'd like to add to, EJ was saying a little bit earlier, I am in the room, so I didn't hear all of it, but in eastern Omaha, particularly east of 52nd, there's still lots of alleyways, but also street, off the street parking, on the city right-of-way parking, lots of trees.
Right.
And I was wrapped with a fine one time for wanting to cut one of the trees down. But with these great big trucks and these big carts and all the cars now parking on these narrow streets, off the least, you know, there's going to be some problems with this new proposal for three carts and automatic pickup that maybe haven't been considered.
And that parking would be the fact.
A lot of these alleyways are broken, I'm sure Binson has got the same problem. A lot of the alleyways are all broken up.
Thank you, Larry.
Yes, very true, very true.
Happy to address any questions.
Yeah, and we're really not involved, the cities will make their decision, and, you know, but Ken, if you're involved, you can, I mean, you think about the neighborhoods, you know, around UNMC and different areas, south of Levemore, wherever, starts to become a serious problem because the cars are parked, you know, they, now they just put the garbage cans out, the guys double park, they go, the trash pickup people run to get the bag, the, and they're on their way, and I've been behind them when they're doing it, so.
Yeah, there are a number of places in Omaha that are already identified as being kind of those problem areas where they can't get a traditional, you know, like those, the large truck through there. And so contractor has to come up with an alternative way to be able to service those areas.
But that becomes really difficult because of doing, and I used to live on 23rd and Poplin, I mean, you see cars parked there every day, and now they can't get over, and they're not going to be putting it out on the street hardly because of the way the cars are parked.
Correct. Does become difficult.
Yeah, and if you're going back to get the bunch of bears, and some are picked up, starts to be a problem.
Bears hotline.
Yeah. The line's busy.
I do, do those, they go up and over, but do they also reach out to grab?
Yes.
Okay.
But not, they're not reaching out like in your neighborhood, 10 foot to get you a can.
I put mine in 11 feet away. Okay, then on the landfill, and you know who I'm going to be talking about, called me, and about disposal of dead horses, right in the record, can we ask them to create a special area outside of people who just come and dump their stuff?
Well, it is, that particular incident was at the working phase. It was not the public disposal area.
I see. And what does that mean by the working phase?
Well, the working phase is that that particular disposal event with the horse was up away from the public. But there are, there are obviously other contractors that are in the area at the time dumping.
Because of the site, do they cover them up, dead animals rather rapidly, or is that done at the end of the day?
Well, they have to do it at the end of the day, for sure.
That I know.
Yeah, but the first part of that question, no, I don't know. I don't know that they do it specifically on an individual basis like that, because there are a number of other types of dead animals that probably are easily buried.
But that's legal to bury a dead animal like that?
Yes. Yes. The only other probably alternative to that would be if there were a Department of Agriculture quarantine type situation where it would specifically say, hey, we need to quarantine and develop a separate cell for this. And that may, that may not necessarily be on the landfill, it may be someplace else as well.
Okay, so, you know, because that can be for a young child, or even some adults, traumatic sight, seeing, they go to the commercial area, they're dumping concrete or whatever they're dumping, and they see these horses. Is there any way we can help alleviate that?
I will, I will ask WESF about that.
Yeah, have it in a more narrowly confined area, or have them identify where they're dumping at the gate so they can direct them to that area?
Okay. I will ask.
Thank you. Any other questions, anybody? Joe, do you have any dead horses you want to get rid of?
Uh, not horses.
I don't know, there's been a lot of dead horses being beaten lately, so. Every now and then, once in a blue moon.
And will continue to be beat.
I wish I thought about that. There's nothing else on the agenda, so do you have anything else?
No.
So the meeting is done.
Very good.